October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, six P M. Discussion of tonight's agenda. Discussion of the fiscal year twenty five audit report.
I'll kind of just briefly go through. You will notice the big stamp draft on the copies. This year, the O M B compliance supplement for two thousand twenty five hasn't been released and approved yet. I mean, there's actually a draft out there, but it's not been approved. Since it hasn't been approved, we can't finalize the audit. But I'm glad we can come present the draft of the audit because soon as that gets approved, then all I've got to do is date the report and then we can send it in. It'll be ready to go. They don't expect any changes to the supplement. So that is a good thing. But as you know, the government's shut down right now, so that supplement's not going to get approved until the government opens back up. And then who knows how long after it will take them to approve it after they get opened back up. Anyways, if you want to turn to pages three, four, and five, that's our independent auditor's report. Just to summarize, it says we have audited the financial statements as of June thirty, two thousand twenty five. And in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented in all mature respects in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. That is a clean, unmodified opinion. We conduct our audit in accordance with all professional standards. You'll notice a new paragraph there, an emphasis of a matter. There was a new accounting standard that was adopted for compensated absences. The prior standard for accrued compensated absences only required accrual for sick leave for persons that were eligible for retirement. So now everybody in the system is getting accrued for their compensated absences. That increased the accrual seven hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred eleven dollars. It's a pretty large accrual. So that's why there's an emphasis of a matter there. It goes on to say that management's responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. And then our responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement. It also mentions there's required supplemental information, the management's discussion analysis. Some pension schedules are also required supplemental information. And then on page five, there's supplementary information, combining schedules, and then the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, of which our opinion does cover as well. And then the last paragraph says there's a report in accordance with government auditing standards, which I will go through in a few minutes. Page six starts the management's discussion and analysis. This gives kind of a verbiage overview of the financial statements. I'll kind of hit some of the highlights there. It says you began the year with cash of almost twenty-five point nine million. You ended the year with about twenty-one point five million. The decrease is mainly due to spending construction funds. The general fund had revenues of about nineteen point eight million and expenses of twenty point four million. You issued no new debt. Debt decreased about just under one point eight million. The net pension liabilities for C E R S decreased about seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, down to about five point six million. K T R S pension liability decreased as well, one point six million, down to thirty-seven point three million. O P E B liabilities. The medical insurance for K T R S, about four point nine million. There's life insurance, about fifty-three thousand. And then the C E R S was actually an asset again this year of almost a hundred and sixty-one thousand. So if you turn to page eight, this is the only place you can see comparative information. So there at the top is a summary balance sheet. So you can see like total assets, total liabilities, and then net position. So this year, total net position was almost twenty-eight point four million, as compared to about twenty-six million. And this is overall, combining all the funds, adding in fixed assets, debt, everything. At the bottom, you can see revenues and expenses for the year. Total revenue is about thirty-one point nine million, as compared to forty point six million in the prior year. Huge decrease due to state and federal funding being much less. Total expenses, twenty-nine point six million, as compared to about twenty-eight point nine million in the prior year. So revenues over expenses, about two point three million this year, as compared to about eleven point eight million in the prior year. Going on down, capital assets, they increased a little over four million net of depreciation. You did have ongoing projects at the high school. And I guess you're getting restarted or have started the one at the middle school. As I mentioned, debt decreased. You do have a budget for next year with the required contingency, so you are in compliance. Page ten is just a little more detail of that summarized balance sheet. So if you turn to page twelve, I did want to point out cash at the end of the year for the general fund, just under seven point two million. Construction fund, you had about ten point two million. If you turn to page fourteen, I did want to point out, general fund had total revenues just under nineteen point eight million. Total expenses, about twenty point four million. So there was a deficiency of revenues under expenditures, about six hundred and nineteen thousand. So you did have to transfer money from your capital projects funds, make a capital funds request. And overall, there was just a decrease of about sixty-five thousand. And then if you look at the construction fund, you spent about five point three million out of the construction fund. Page sixteen, food service fund at the end of the year had just under three point two million in cash. Childcare fund decreased a lot, down to ten thousand. Page seventeen, overall, the food service fund did increase net position about two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Childcare fund decreased about seventy-three thousand. Next, page eighteen converts that to a cash flow basis. Food service cash increased a hundred fifteen thousand. Childcare decreased about eighty-eight thousand. Page nineteen shows your trust funds, forty thousand five hundred sixty dollars. You turn to page twenty-one, shows your budget in actual for the general fund. Your revenues came in above budget, just under one point six million. Expenses came in under budget, about four point six million. So favorable budget variances. Then starting on page twenty-three, we get into the notes to the financial statements. That first page, twenty-three discusses the Chanel Memorial Trust. You had carryover funds of thirteen thousand two sixty-eight. You received an additional almost two hundred fifty-eight thousand, spent two hundred fifty-six thousand. And so you got fourteen thousand nine oh four to carry over to two thousand twenty-six. And that rest of that footnote is pretty much the same accounting policies, with the exception of, as I mentioned to you, compensated absences was a new accounting pronouncement adopted. So the policy for it, you know, now is to accrue basically thirty percent of all employees sick leave. Page thirty-two, footnote five gets into the debt disclosure. Thirty-three shows a summary of the debt. As I mentioned, it did decrease. Your bond payments were one point seven million with no new debt. Page thirty-four shows capital assets. And there it shows a construction in progress increased by that five point three million spend in the construction fund. You did also purchase vehicles of about three hundred fourteen thousand. Then it kind of gets into a lot of the pension disclosure, and I'm not going to go through all that unless you specifically want me to. Point out on page fifty-two, on behalf payments for the year that the state contributed was a total of a little over six million. So like teachers' retirement was two point six million, health insurance, almost two point six million, were the two largest amounts that they contributed on. Page fifty-three, I mentioned to you, we did have to restate the beginning net position for that implementation of Gatsby one oh one for the accrued compensated absences. Almost seven hundred sixty-three thousand. Then we get into the required supplemental information, which the first little bit there is all pension required disclosures. So if you want to turn to page sixty-eight, shows the combining other non-major governmental funds. So it shows the district activity funds, about a hundred and seven thousand. Student activity funds, two hundred seventy thousand. Seek about a hundred seventeen thousand, and then the building fund, four hundred thirty-eight thousand. And the next page shows the revenues and expenses in each one of those. And then page seventy shows the activity funds by school. And as I mentioned, there's a little over a hundred seventy thousand altogether in the schools. And page seventy-one shows the detail of the high school. The high school began the year with about just under a hundred fourteen thousand. Had receipts about a hundred twenty-five thousand, spent a hundred, just under a hundred thirteen thousand. Ended the year with a hundred and twenty-six thousand in cash. Page seventy-two is the scheduled expenditures of federal awards, of which you had total federal expenditures of about four point three million. This year, we tested the Title One program as a major program, which was just under one point one million of expenditures. Page seventy-four, seventy-five is our independent auditor's report on internal control and on compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. And basically, as part of doing the audit, we review your internal controls. We test for compliance with laws and regulations. And if we had any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, they would be in this report. But we did not have any, so it's a clean report. Next report is the single audit report, seventy-six through seventy-eight. And this relates primarily to that Title One program that I said we tested as a major program. We looked at its internal controls, tested for compliance with the draft O M B compliance supplement. And if we had any findings, it would be in this report, but we did not have any. Page seventy-nine is the nice little summary, which you can look down through there and see. No material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no noncompliance, so it's all clean. Page eighty, if there were any prior audit findings, we'd be required to follow up on them, but there were none. And then in the back, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, even though we had no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, K D E requires, no matter how trivial, to include any recommendation in the management letter, which is what this is. So we did have a couple items, or three items. The first one being, there were Booster Club annual financial reports that weren't being submitted on a timely basis at the high school, in Owingsville Elementary School and Crossroads Elementary School. And then at Owingsville Elementary School, there were two fundraisers that the fundraiser summary form wasn't completed. And then lastly, there was at the Crossroads Elementary and Owingsville Elementary, the annual financial reports weren't submitted by the deadline of July twenty-fifth. They're not timely submitted. That is that report. I do have one other letter to governance, which basically, again, reiterates that there was one new accounting policy adopted for accrued compensated absences. It also points out that there's some estimates in the financial statements, depreciation, accrued sick leave, leased assets, net pension liability, O P E B liability, of which we have tested those and determined they're reasonable. We encounter no difficulties in performing the audit. There were no past audit adjustments, no disagreements with management, and basically no other issues that we feel like we need to bring to your attention. Overall, very good audit, and I feel like you all should be pretty proud of yourselves and proud of Brittany. I think there's a lot of school districts that would like to be in your all situation, like Fayette and Jefferson. And I can name a few others. There's a few others that are also. Any questions? I went past.
No, I thank you. We thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item four, construction update, Bath County High School and Bath County Middle School.
Good evening. On the, on the construction side, we had a, on the layback, we had a one-year walkthrough, which, you know, contractors provide a one-year warranty on everything. So we just did that recently and just waiting for Jonathan, his team, to compile, to come up, to see if there's anything that, that needs to be addressed. And then, and then on the high school, we've completed punch list. I think we've got a couple of things. Well, the DOAS unit, there was a rooftop unit that we were having concerns with. And we, I think we're in good shape there. Friday, they installed another controller. And I think we're in pretty good shape there on that. We had had some issues previously, but I think it's been addressed. We will continue to monitor that. We do have a leak in the area that was repaired recently, around the kitchen area. And that last rain, we had a lot of rain in a short period of time. And we're just going to monitor that, see if, if it's in the area where, the actual area where the work was completed, or is it near that location? So I think this week, we may, may be trying to take a look at that during the rain. I think we'll see, I think we'll get a lot of rain. So we're going to try to see if we can find, find a leak. And so we're doing the commissioning. So pretty well complete, the job's pretty well finished, both projects.
So is it still leaking? I mean, like, is it sealed or?
Well, it leaked the one time. The only, we only know of the one time. Now, I'm looking sort of at Mr. Brandon Berg and Tim, see if they, if it's leaked since.
I just want to make sure we get it done within our one year, so it's covered.
Right, right. We're just trying to find if, like, say, is this area where it was, where it was repaired? Or is this an area that was not addressed? Right. Yes. Right. Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because that's got to be fixed if it's a problem, because it's in the kitchen over there.
Right, most definitely it would be in that warranty. And, you know, there's been some conversation about the graphics. We're just sort of waiting on, on decision there.
Do you all have the, the email? Are you talking about the mural? Okay. Do you have that email that was sent and approved by Ms. Brandon Berg and Evans?
Short answer is no. Short answer is it was a meeting in person and no follow-up email saying, here's exactly what was approved. We have an email for, here was the presentation. But that was it, nothing following up documenting it. What we do have from Schiller, the supplier, is how much it was. I've talked to my boss to figure out how we can make sure it gets fixed regardless. But I don't have an email saying, this is the approval for us to proceed. I just have an email for, here's what was shown.
Okay. Can I, I want to ask Ms. Brandonberg, because she's here. Did you physically have a meeting with Mr. Evans and with them on that mural? No, I'm asking Ms. Brandonberg, because they have told Jonathan that they, the meeting was in person and it was with Mr. Evans and Ms. Brandonberg. But Ms. Brandonberg has told us that she never had a meeting over that mural. And she's here and she's saying no.
Okay, I can send you the, I don't want to, I don't want to go back and forth.
Because you don't, you don't have an email. Like, all I wanted to do is if it was approved, if we approved it, and it was approved by email, they would have, I'm, I'm sure, to approve a mural, you would have to have a sample of what it looks like, right?
Correct, so that's a good distinction. So Ms. Brandonberg, it was, I think it was like September twenty-sixth or thirtieth. I'll find the email, but I know that's the invite for us to meet in person. That's when that happened. The point that you have about for the sample, that came, I think, maybe a year or two later. And so I don't think Ms. Brandonberg saw the sample. We definitely had a review for all of the finishes, including the graphic. I think it was the fall of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three.
But you have that in an email, right?
I have the presentation of what we discussed and reviewed, yes, as an email, but not anything from you, Ms. Brandonberg, saying, we approve it or anything like that. I don't have that in writing.
Okay, because that's, the mural is maroon. And, and, you know, we've all baffled this back and forth. If we had seen a sample of it at any point, I, I feel like even if Mr. Evans was here, he would have said, no, our color is red. You know, just because it's not maroon. So as a board, and, well, I can't speak on everybody, but we definitely don't want to put any more money into that mural. If, if worst-case scenario, take it down. Because it's not.
The right colors.
We, we can't put thirteen thousand dollars in a mural.
No, right.
You know, we're not going to do that. And we're just, we're totally, totally not happy with it.
Okay, understood. So to pull a full circle on it, I'm not saying that Ms. Brandonberg saw a sample. That is definitely not true. I know that for sure. And I want to make that super clear, that she never saw a sample. What we do have, and I can send you the email of, is the presentation that was sent, I think, September, late September, twenty twenty-three, of here are all the finishes that we had discussed before a contractor actually provided a sample for a lot of those pieces. And so in that point of view, it was a color mock-up of small samples on a board and a PDF or a PowerPoint presentation that that's all that she would have seen. No physical sample of actual, the graphics themselves.
Okay. Because when I looked at the email that she received, they were samples of other schools that had been done, which, you know, don't look anything like what we have done. And, and I did see those, but that had, that, that was not even remotely close to what we had done. So that's why I was like, well, that's totally.
Irrelevant.
That wouldn't have, that's like talking about two totally different subjects. Those, what I saw, that they sent their work of other murals in schools, does not look one thing like what our mural does. And I'm not saying just the graphics. I'm talking about what they sent looked amazing. What we got is nowhere near amazing. So even the quality was completely not there compared to what we saw in that email that she got. So that's, my point was like, if we had seen a Pantone or, not even what it was going to look like, but here's the colors we're going to use, that type of thing, anything. Just because it goes back to, those were not nowhere near red. You know what I mean?
Yes. Yes. So definitely, I can get you that exact email, like, here's the presentation of all the finishes that we would like to put into the project. But yeah, just want to make it super clear, Ms. Brandonberg, no, you did not see the sample. I know that for sure. And so definitely, when I mentioned that my boss, Silka, is involved to try to figure out how we can get it fixed, that doesn't cost you all money. That's what I mean, is that we're going to try to get that, so you all are happy with it.
Perfect.
Okay. For the other items in the high school for the agenda, I want to summarize the change orders, because there are quite a few. The first would be P R thirty-eight, which is related to some additional flooring replacement. I can't quite recall the space that we're talking of. I know the passage was called F R C. And now it might be called Sterling Health, but it's the space right next to the concession stands. That's off of the gym building itself of the high school. There, there was a goal to replace additional flooring tile and rubber base, and I think those offices. Am I thinking of the right space, Tim? Is it the F R C still? Okay. You are correct, yes. So as Tim mentioned, when the contractor, I'm not sure how the idea came up, but there was an interest in trying to replace the flooring. And at the time, it was advised to Tim that it would not be a cost to you all, but that it would be something that would be absorbed in an allowance that the contractor was already carrying for that work. Technically, there were two bid packages that we were dealing with there. There was one bid package that would do the demo, and another bid package that would do the new work. Only one of those contractors failed to keep track of that and then ultimately realized that they did not invoice or outline the intended expenditure of that allowance on their end. So by the time the project is closing out, they realized that they didn't have a remaining balance left to cover said flooring. So that is currently what's in front of you as part of P R thirty-eight. Now that the flooring has been done and the contractor acknowledged that they didn't have a remaining allowance to cover that, the remaining balance for that one contractor to do, to get paid for that work is the amount of, I believe, about six thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. I wish I could tell you why or how that conversation got started, but as Tim mentioned and the way I was told about it, it was something that was agreed upon on site. But now, months later, the contractor's telling us that they don't have the allowance to cover that. So that's why it's a change order in front of you all for consideration. The next one is a small credit for no longer providing some additional power at the new, or at the existing main entry access controls or hardware. During construction, the contractor worked with Phil and Tim to figure out, like, where exactly they wanted card readers and power-operated hardware. And it turned out that there was no need to do that anymore for the front entry. So the electrical work that they were going to do was about two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents for the power connections for those items. So because they didn't do it, they're cutting that, that, that small amount back to you all. And that is P R forty, yeah, forty. Yes. When it comes to the other change order, PR forty-one, that is, if you remember last, I think last month, we talked about the price of five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars to do urinal screens was really high. And so in front of you, for consideration, is option A, to proceed with that, and that way the contractor does it all for the, the eight partitions in question for, for the high school building. Or doing option B, which would be one thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents just for the materials. They clarify though that, that, but when you anticipate that, we're talking maybe a total of maybe thirteen hundred dollars. And when I talked to Phil and seeing what he can get on his end, he was at a ballpark of fifteen hundred dollars. So the material quote alone compared to what Phil can get as material alone is, is a better price here directly from the contractor. And then that, you know, the district self-performed that work. So that would be a choice there between A, proceeding with the five thousand dollar ad, which originally presented to you all last time, or the material cost, which would be option B for PR forty-one.
It's thirteen hundred and.
Yeah, I, I estimated thirteen hundred when you add additional blocking that, that the team would need to install that stuff fully to the structure. But the hard number, just for what Schiller's providing, is eleven hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. And then when we get down to the, I wanna call it a compilation of other change orders that are crediting back to you all, it's a series of, I believe, five direct purchase order line items that had some remaining balances that had a net total of a credit for sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars coming back to you all for, I believe, if there's five change DPOs, three of them relate to the general trades contractor and two of them relate to the finishes contractor. So totality would be a, a net return of sixteen thousand four thirty-three ninety-one cents. Any questions on those before I kind of go full circle with the LEVAC project? Okay, so assuming that the three that we talked about, the very first, which are the flooring, then the credit for no longer doing power at some access controls, and then the additional cost for just materials of the urinal partitions, we're tracking that, oh, and plus the, or minus the credits for the DPOs, we're tracking about one hundred and ninety-one thousand approximately of remaining contingency for the high school project. Meaning if nothing else comes about, anything else moving forward, you're gonna try to close out and free up about a hundred and ninety-three, a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars from the high school project. Which is great. That part of it need to be earmarked to then move into a revised BG one for the LEVAC project so that you all have the remaining balance to truly pay out all of the asphalt pavement work that was done during that one change order. I say that because currently, the contingency for LEVAC is in the negative by a hundred and, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand or a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, it's in the negative. But once you move over the high school money, you'll have a surplus of about, let's say, twenty thousand dollars between the two projects. So just making sure you are aware that next month, if we're able to get all the BG fours and fives processed for the high school, will also include a revised BG one for the LEVAC so that you can fully close out that project too and pay for everything remaining there.
So the, so the asphalt came in at a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
No, ma'am, so the asphalt, I believe, is like three hundred something thousand, but the remaining contingency for LEVAC couldn't cover all of it. And so the goal would be that we move money from the high school, once the high school's fully closed out, and use it to help pay for the rest of the LEVAC change order. So you have, you, you will have the money, we just have to put in the extra step of closing out the high school and putting some of that money into LEVAC so we can pay the rest fully.
No, yeah, that's great, so you take the excess from the one project, move it over to the other one, it should, it would balance out.
And not to be obvious about it, but that's mainly because we're two different contractors, two different contracts, so that's why. There are no questions about that, I'll move over to some of the items that we discussed or discovered at the one-year walkthrough to make you aware of. One item that continues to be a challenge for maintaining the security and access to the building for both, I believe, the LEVAC or the Chenault Building and parts of the high school building is by design, design standards, we like to put ADA actuator buttons near main entries so that with anyone who needs to operate a door with, without anyone else being around to open the door for them, they can press that button and open the door. The challenge is balancing the security of a school, where you don't want just anyone coming to the door, pressing a button, just letting themselves in. There's these electrified hardware locks that like truly require someone to be at a desk to unlock it and they'll let someone in. What that does though, it's been putting a lot of stress on the, I think, the timer of the lock or there's something happening where if someone just comes up and presses the button, it's not gonna open up. But it keeps jamming to where, when even someone does get to a desk to release that lock, it doesn't wanna operate. So the option for you all is to tell us if we can proceed with the contractor disengaging or disabling the functionality of that ADA button so that it no longer causes challenges with constantly having someone to release and, and have a failing lock system at their front doors. And I think it's been mostly happening at the Chenault Building. We can't just tell the contractor, go ahead and disable it though, because we wanna be equitable to anyone who wants access to the building. At the same time, I mean, it's secure for the building to not have those function. So it's up to you all if you would like for us to give that direction to the contractor to no longer have those ADA actuator buttons operating and tied to the locks of the front doors. You'll still have a locked building.
Then how would someone that, a visitor that needed to, how would they get in the building?
It would require someone to constantly have to go do that, or I, I, short answer is that that would be the only way to do it, because even if we put a sign up saying, do not press this button until you press the audiovisual intercom to tell someone you're here, that doesn't stop anyone from still trying, or maybe they misreading it. So there's always a sign option. But in reality, a lot of people are just going up and pressing the button as you think that you would want. But unfortunately, it's not like a museum where, you know, you press and you just come in, it's a school. And you wanna make sure you control whoever gets to come into this building, so it's kind of like balancing equitability for anyone to come in, security where you don't want anyone just to come in. And to me, if you want that thing to stop failing or constantly causing issues for the person at the reception, the best answer is to find a way to disable the ADA actuator button. But I don't know how often you have people trying to come into the building outside of hours. Or most of the time, someone who needs to get in, there's someone at the reception to let them in.
Yeah, I, I think that goes back to your principles, what, what do they want? What, what do they think would work best? Cuz we don't, we don't know.
Right. So yeah, I, I've been informed that it's mostly the Chenault Building itself in that entry. I'm not saying that maybe there's other challenges for any of your other high school entrances, but I've not been made aware that the actuator buttons are conflicting.
So you have, you got complaints?
I, I've, during our walkthrough, I think, if it wasn't Phil, it was someone walking us with us, Anfield, that mentioned that, yeah, that, that's been a current issue at the Chenault Building entrance. He did say though, that ultimately, the chances that someone's not at the reception when someone needs to get in the building is kind of minimal. I even asked if it was maybe during the greenhouse sale, like is there a chance that potentially someone isn't working at the front entrance? That you still would need people to come in and out? That's probably the only thing that comes to mind, that would be after hours, that would require or help encourage people to use that button. But if there's not many opportunities for that, then it sounds like it's probably okay to just rely on someone to always be at the reception to allow someone to come in. Otherwise, it's gonna continue to cause you more trouble, more troubles down the road that you're gonna have an electrician have to come out and try to figure out like why, is it, is it just burned out? Is it overstressed?
I think maybe just let Ms. Brandenburg kind of monitor the situation and, and see what comes of it. And if, if that's her recommendation, then we can go with something like that. And if not, just leave it alone.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm, I'm being told it's a problem if it's not that big of a deal, you know, on a day-to-day, that we can leave it. It's just something that we can't just say contractor correct without you all being comfortable with that.
Okay.
But if you wanna talk about it and then just let me know if we can just let the contractor know when you're comfortable with that, if you wanna go that route. Okay, the second piece would be regarding the, like David mentioned, the kitchen leak. So as Tim mentioned, it's only when it's apparently like really dramatic rain, even when it rains like a regular thunderstorm, it doesn't seem to come inside. I believe when the contractor who was on-site saw it, it was truly going straight down from what looks to be maybe the roof access door that was put in. But it was only during that like really, really big rain early in October. And as far as today, it's still not an issue. So a host test would be the best way to help localize like where exactly is it coming from. But definitely, it's nowhere near as much water as it was before. And so once we know where it's coming from based off the host test, then we'll know how to plug it up and fix it. Otherwise, it seems to be greatly reduced down to hopefully zero or little to zero water coming in, but we'll figure out that little portion and plug it up. The last piece, as David mentioned, is we'd had a very thorough commissioning meeting to make sure all of your HVAC systems, your controls are tested and balanced and working. And at that time, last week, they had one unit to worry about. And as of Friday last week, they got their missing piece and it's now functioning and all the controls are working. So all they're doing is finalizing, I think, a list of like ten items that they have to figure out between the controls and the systems. At least the three main units are online, are functioning and they're reading the way they should be reading. And that's as, as of Friday of last week, that we got that update from them. I think that covers us for all things high school. If we can talk briefly about middle school. Okay, so for middle school, what you have in your packet are a collection of drawings, the construction documents, that if, if agreeable, that's how we will finalize and start to put documents out to bid. The caveat is, we are at the mercy of when the city can perform a water flow test to make sure that all of the new fire suppression systems going in and that any, or let me say that better, all the fire protection system piping that goes in, that all of it has adequate water pressure. And then separately, to make sure that the fire department has adequate access to connect up to a fire hydrant and access the fire vault. So based off of that, and when they can get that information confirmed or provided, is when we can then turn around and submit to the Housing Building Council, who's basically the plan reviewer, who will give the green light that we can go out to bid. That's, that's one big factor, that if we don't get an answer this week or next week, we're basically pushing our bid time out further and further and further until we can get that information. Otherwise, the plan reviewer won't review and give us approval to bid.
They have to do a test, they have to clean the water, the water tanks or something before they do the test. Okay, a, a city council member says they have one tank cleaned and they're in the process of doing the other right now.
Okay, good.
So hopefully, that'll get done.
Yeah, yeah, so barring that, there are other pieces that are impacting the scope and the budget, so we can talk about that in a second. But let's say that, that gets done, they get the flow test, let's say, this week. I feel that maybe at most, we would then have to see how long it takes for the plan reviewer to review everything, to give us the green light. And if those two dominos fall online, then we are on track to bid late November. But if it goes any further, then it might mean a December or even January bid. It just depends on when we get the flow test as step number one. And then as how long it takes for the plan reviewer to review and approve for us to bid. Normally, that plan review process, cuz they review everything that comes to them, I think it's about four at the short end to six on the long end, weeks for them to review. We'll have a better idea when we actually submit, but ultimately, they won't even look at it unless the flow test is done.
How long are the bids out before normally you get bids back in?
From the HBC reviewer?
I'm talking about after, when you let the bid.
When we advertise.
Yeah, how long?
We generally give the contractors three to four weeks.
Okay. So we could be looking at February before we get any bids back?
Surely, hopefully, we can get it done no later than January, but you, you are correct, yes. Like it could be that we have a few more weeks on top of when the actual bids are, are solicited. We're trying to keep it as, as, as soon as possible, but we're at the mercy of when the city can do it. And then everything else is kind of on us or the HBC reviewer and how long they can get done. So beyond that, in terms of like what you have in your packet, the drawings are indicative of all the scope items that we've talked about since we started the project up to now. And in your documents, I included some BG three drafts to kind of just show you where we are in terms of costs. It's three documents in there, there's a KDE statement of probable cost that shows a total of eleven million dollars, four hundred thousand for construction. And that's just base bid estimated. Then we have a base bid plus all the alternates at thirteen, thirteen million. And then the third sheet just shows you what we presented to you as eleven point four million from design development, just to kind of give you a sense of how we started to where we are now. And there's some details to that, but I wanna pause and kind of just make sure I can, make sure you're digesting the right short, the right sheets. So the two that should be the ones that you have like actual relevant to like what you're having the drawings, they, they have a project phase kind of in bold near the top and there should be a checkbox where it says construction documents. If you see a checkbox and that's, that's the correct one for construction documents, if you see another one that says design development, that's me showing you how it looks back in August. Reason I bring that up is because I know, I'm, I'm remembering that you all are saying that you wanna make sure you spend the grant amount, which is about seven million. But as we've been designing and trying to incorporate things, when we have our scope of HVAC, sprinklers, plumbing, and then the roof replacement or some miscellaneous envelope improvements, just from the base bid, that is where we are for the four scope items, just base bid alone out of eleven point four construction cost. And then if you scroll down a little bit or look down further, the project cost estimate would be thirteen point five. That's after we say, here's all of the third-party services that you've paid for. This is assuming some technology upgrades, this is assuming how much it is to pay for the plan reviewer fee. So total project outside of just construction, base bid, we're at thirteen five. And my, my prompt to you all is, if you feel comfortable with trying to see if that is even realistic on a bid day, we can proceed and bid it and see what it is. If you're like, no, we wanna go ahead and try to value engineer stuff out of it, my only prompt to you is that we can remove some things that are like finish-related in response to plumbing upgrades or finish-related in response to electrical upgrades. But the biggest ticket item beyond the mechanical plumbing and electrical or sprinkler is your roof. And that, that's all we have to choose from, really, it's which major system or. It's which major system or roof do we feel like is the biggest item for us to potentially move as a full alternate? That way, you have a more realistic and better-aligned budget to anticipate for your bids. We could also bid it and be surprised that we are overestimating on our end, and the contractors are saying, no, this whole thing together is more about $10 million. But there's always a gamble that it's not $10 million, it's actually $15 million. So to, if, what I'm really asking you is, it sounds like, looking at the numbers, we either need to take a pause and try to see what we can reduce out of it from recent conversations, or we try to see what the real numbers are when we bid it, and then have that same exercise potentially to reduce it down.
I think when we talked about it and we picked everything, we tried to be very conscious of the budget.
Right.
So I don't know if we could scale back much more or not.
Currently, when it comes to the non-mechanical electrical plumbing sprinkler work, I believe when it comes to the full roof replacement, like 10 doors that have to get upgraded, a couple of windows, I'm going to call all of that as envelope improvements that have nothing to do with mechanical electrical plumbing, that, our current estimate for that is about $900,000. So that, to me, is the biggest ticket item. We can easily try to figure out how we can make it an alternate, so that way you're not beholden to that on bid day. But in reality, that might take your base bid from 11.4 down to 10.5 potentially as a construction cost for us.
But why would we not bid it? I mean, if we bid it, because we don't know, it could come in lower, right?
Exactly, yes.
So it doesn't cost us anything to bid it, and if we bid it, we're not held to doing it, correct?
Correct, yes. You can decline, I believe, right? We can decline all the bids? Yeah, so you're right. It doesn't cost you anything, other than it would cost you more time, right? So like, if we get a bid in December and things really high, we'll come back to you all, say, okay, here's what edits we can do, and then we might try to rebid it again in January or February. So it won't cost you all anything, other than just more time.
Okay, so if we put it out to bid, and let's say the roof people are the ones holding up the bid process, can't you go ahead and submit what you've got to us in December or January?
Yes. You know, we may have five, six bid packages, and we may want to reject two of them.
Okay.
But accept four of them, and rebid the other two.
Okay.
Or modify the plans, whatever, and then...
Right. And we can always add to that, and we can always take, you know, one thing we know, we can't commit and say, yeah, we're going to do this, and then say, oh, no, we're not, we're going to run out of money. That's the whole purpose of having a bid, to protect us from, you know, raising costs and things like that. But I don't see why we would not send a bid out, when these are just the very basics that that building needs, you know? So why would we not do that? Reason why I was asking.
You're correct. No downsides to bidding it, just to see.
Okay.
And then, at that point, if you want to proceed with one or two of the bid packages, you can. The thing that I'll try my best to do is, when we get those bids, I'll let you know like what bid packages are kind of linked together, if that makes sense. So let's say we decide to not honor the roof replacement. Technically, the new HVAC work might require some new roof work, a little bit at least. Or if it's, well, we don't want to necessarily proceed with plumbing, well, I would have to say, well, the goal would be to do full abatement, and currently, the only abatement required is at the plumbing lines themselves. So, you know, I'll try to give you some advice on like some things that probably should stay together, or have some major priorities that probably need to still be considered. But yeah, it doesn't hurt us to bid. I just want you to know that I know we're higher than what your goal is, and we could be pleasantly surprised and be like, this is really great, and we have a better estimate from the contractors, and not from our dollar amount, but currently, just base bid alone, you are at your max, not exceeding your max truly on base bid on our estimates.
We've got about five minutes, and we've got to move on to the regular meeting.
Sure.
So we'll have to finish this and other items during regular session.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah. Discussion of consent items.
The consent items are listed, they're pretty straightforward, I think everybody can follow through them a lot. We've got several MOUs. We've got the school calendar committee and those things that are in your packet. Then, the next one, we've got discussion of KET's first offer of assistance. That's our normal offer of assistance from KETs is funding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And we'll have to appoint a board member during the regular session. We've got discussion number seven, discussion about purchase of a school bus, that's in there. We're going to try to order one propane special needs bus, that's $185,000. And then, of course, there's the number eight, the discussion of the 26, 27 school calendar committee and the board appointee on that committee. And then, the rest is other business, which we've added, is that where Karen, is that where you added it? We've got Title I expenditure funds, draft policy for the first reading. And that completes the agenda.
Do I have anyone on the board that wants to serve on the calendar committee? I served last year, and I wasn't able to attend any of the meetings because I was in Florida. So do I have anyone that would like to do that and work with Ms. Watkins? Kim, Kim Carey? Anybody else want to? No. Kim, you're it.
Hey.
Okay. We're adjourned.
That would allow, as soon as we got that report got cleared, whenever it got cleared, then Max Walker and RPA go ahead and...
And that's kind of what they were asking for.
Yeah.
Call to order, Bath County Board of Education, regular meeting, October 27th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Discussion and possible action on tonight's agenda. The motion to amend the agenda to add the first reading on policy 08.1351 AP, .21, Title I expenditure of funds.
Second.
Have a motion by Barbara, second by Eric. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, let's take a few moments for silent devotion. Thank you. Tonight's student spotlight is Crossroads Elementary School and preschool.
Well, we're going to spotlight about 182 kids tonight. We didn't bring them with us. We had done an incentive for our kiddos. They had to have zero unexcused absences and not lose any of their care points for four weeks. And we ended up with 182 kids qualifying for that. And they got to pie an administrator in the face. So they got to choose whether they were going to pie myself, Mr. Kane, or Ms. Poe. And I'll be the first to admit, when I seen that many kids, I tried to get out of it and tried to make it like a game of chance. We're going to offer a chance for the kids to do it and let three or four win. But Mr. Kane and Ms. Poe advocated for the children and wanted them all to do it. So we spent maybe a couple hours probably out there taking pies to the face. I think we've got some pictures, if you want to... Yeah, that's just talking about it, just, we'll get some pictures there. So we had a good fun time, took a lot of pies to the face. We should have kept count to see who took the most, but we didn't. But the main thing was, is the children loved it, and it gave them an incentive to be at school and be on their best behavior. So we're right now trying to brainstorm and come up with other ideas. And it worked out perfect, because that day was the day that Ms. Watkins came and done her attendance kickoff. We had Dr. Melton there, and the cheerleaders got to come and help, and they was a really big help. They kept the pies going for us, kept us filled up. So it worked out really well for us that day, and everybody had a good time.
Thank you, guys. Item five, superintendent and board of communication, Dr. Melton. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a second spotlight.
Oh.
And it's our preschool program.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And I started working in preschool 20 years ago, and I had to figure that out when I was sitting here, but I'd do everything like you all probably do by how old my kids are. And I remembered, I started in preschool when my youngest child was three, so I was at preschool with her. When I inherited the preschool program and the special education program at Bath County, I inherited it from some really good leaders. So it was mine to screw up or improve. And hopefully, I've made some improvements and build off what was there. We have the best staff that anybody could ever wish for. And one of the former leaders of preschool and special ed here now works at the co-op and is over special ed for the region, and she says, and says it best, is Bath County knows how to do preschool. So we'll play this video, and then I have another announcement.
Playing on a tiny playground.
I'm doing this all the way.
Kiss your bride. Kiss your bride. It's something you can do. Kiss your bride. Kiss your bride.
When I level at preschool, I play with my friends, and I play with employees, and listen to my teachers.
Hey, Cora, what do you want to be when you grow up?
Hey, I'm my best friend.
She your best friend?
Yeah.
Riley, what do you want to be when you grow up?
So white.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
Police officer.
A police officer?
Firefighter.
Owen, what do you want to be when you grow up?
Uh, monster truck driver.
Monster truck driver, wow. Parker, what do you want to be when you grow up?
Police officer.
Police officer?
Officer.
What do you want to be when you grow up? You want to go to kindergarten?
Yeah, can I go now?
For Bath County preschool to be successful, we have to have a great staff, and we have to have families that are willing to work with us and want to send their children. And we certainly have plenty of people that want to attend preschool. We're packed right now. Some of our teachers and staff were able to come here tonight, and some of our kids and some families. I'm sure the weather kept everybody away, and I don't blame them. But over the past three years, we've been going through a process, and it was called a pyramid process. And so, we were trying to turn our preschool into a place that was a supportive environment for three- and four-year-old children, under KDE and the regional training centers, leadership and assistance. and assistance. We have been observed at least nine times by KDE, and that's each classroom. And we have done several hours, and when I say "we," my mother would say, "Do you have a rat in your pocket?" Because they are the "we," it's not me. But they have done several hours of meetings and PDs. And now "we," I did help with this a lot, is submitted hundreds of documents to the state. And after all of that, we are one of the very few programs in the state that has a five-star rating. And so it's a huge deal, is something that Bath County can be very proud of. It means we are offering good quality care for our youngest children in the county. So I have banners to present tonight to the principal, teachers and staff. And let's see, for Owingsville Elementary, Ms. Ashley Wells, principal, can come down. Ms. Ann Reed, and Ann is our special education teacher for both preschool buildings, and she is wonderful, wonderful help. I have Ms. Rayanne Owens, one of our teachers. Ms. Sarah Jarrett, her assistant. And in preschool, teachers and assistants work just side by side, and there's no difference between the teacher and the assistant. It's all one big team. Mr. Monty Markwell's here, and his assistant couldn't be here tonight. And then Owingsville Elementary kids, get ready to give your teachers a round of applause when I give them this. And you know the round of applause is... And now, we have Crossroads, and we have Ms. Megan Gilvin. And Ms. Megan, are you the, you're the only staff member here? Okay. In the video, Ms. Megan put all that together, and this is how much I trust these ladies, because you give them a job and they do it and they do it right. I watched it for the first time with you guys. He went back. And I also want to thank our board, because our board is so supportive of preschool and all things early childhood. And that is where it starts, that's the foundation. So we appreciate you guys.
Congratulations on the five stars.
Thank you.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, I'm gonna change the location, do this a little bit different this time because I've got an award to give out also. For Superintendent Board of Communication, of course, I met with several different entities and groups this month, some being Kid First, Kentucky ASAP, Pathways Community Action Council, and Subject Online Education Platform, which we met with earlier, well, late last week. I attended the KDE Teacher of the Year Ceremony to celebrate Ms. Michelle Bradley, which we're gonna do here in just a second. And that was a great honor for us, and she was, she should've won, in our opinion, but we're kind of partial. Of course, I attended the KEDC Board Meeting as our representative. I did teach the Kentucky Association of School Administrators webinar for new superintendents on transportation on October 16th. Of course, I attended the Kentucky Association of School Administrators School Safety Committee on October 17th. We're working on and should have finished by tomorrow, our winter weather transportation memo to be sent out for families and to share how we go through the process of canceling schools and those types of things. We've worked on a memo, me and Ms. Combs, on drafting outline policies and requirements for booster clubs and those types of activities that was mentioned in our audit report. We were notified last week of initial selection of the Department of Justice COPS grant, which we received. And of course, we put out a Facebook post on that, but that was a great thing from our finance department to be able to get that. We had our monthly district administrators' meeting on October 20th. We had, of course, the BCHS College and Career Fair on October 22nd. I attended the Kentucky, well, the KEDC Regional Superintendent's Meeting in Maisible. We conducted our first round of walkthroughs at the high school last Thursday, and everything was really good there. We, of course, tomorrow I'm gonna speak at the JAG induction ceremony, as they start that. We have the BIG's mentorship program kickoff on Wednesday, and we have the Wildcat Advisory Council meeting on Thursday. It's just some of the highlights of things that we have done in the last month. Now it is my distinct honor to honor Ms. Michelle Bradley, and I'm gonna read what this certificate says. Certificate of recognition, this certificate is presented to Michelle Bradley in recognition of her outstanding achievement as a recipient of the Kentucky Teacher Achievement Award. Your dedication, leadership, and passion for education continue to inspire students and educators across Bath County and the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So would you come down here and we'll give this to you? We owe you so much more.
Item six, discussion and possible action on approving the following items. Minutes, September financial statement, claims, superintendent expenditures, superintendent, September 2025 working calendar, use of facility, grant, review of all monthly financial reports of all funds, pay bills through October 31st, 2025, annual audited financial report, AFR, fiscal year '25 audit report, New Horizons Academy, MOU with KEDC, Youth Ready for Life Program, MOU with Gateway Community Action, Gear Up, MOA, 2026-27 School Calendar Committee, purchase of a new score table.
I'll make the motion to approve item 6A through 6P.
Second.
Have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, public comments, I don't think we have any. Item eight, discussion and possible action on CAT's first offer of assistance. I'll make a motion to approve the CAT's first offer of assistance.
Second.
Have a motion by Barbara, second by Carla, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, discussion and possible action on the purchase of one school bus.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of one school bus.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action to approve Change Order Proposal 38 on the Bath High School HVAC renovation BG 22-376.
I'll make the motion to approve the Change Order Proposal 38 on the Bath County High School HVAC renovation BG number 22-376.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action to approve the Change Order Proposal 40 on the Bath County High School HVAC renovation BG 22-376.
I'll make the motion to approve the Change Order Proposal 40 on the Bath County High School HVAC renovation BG number 22-36.
Have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, discussion and possible action to approve the Change Order Proposal 41. Option 41A is materials cost only. Option 41B is materials and contractor labor costs on the Bath County High School HVAC renovation BG 22-376.
I'll make the motion to approve the Change Order Proposal 41 with the option 41A, materials cost only, and option 41B, materials and contractor labor cost on the Bath County High School HVAC renovation BG 22-376.
Um, we need a change on that motion. We need to select either 41A or 41B.
I thought we were gonna let them bid it both ways.
They did bid it both ways. We had the numbers, right? We had the numbers, was like $1,300 for materials only and $5,000 and some for materials and labor.
Other than we need to pick how we want to do it.
I think A, pay $4,000 labor.
What do you all think?
Tim, did we not discuss with you that you all could install these?
Okay. I'm gonna withdraw that. You need a second right now first. Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to withdraw.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to withdraw the first motion?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now I'll make the motion to approve option 41A, materials cost only.
I'll second. Have a motion by Carla, second by Barbara, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action to approve change orders for unspent funds associated with DPOs totaling $16,433.91 credit, DPO 03002-01 of $77. DPO 0300601, $165.98 credit. DPO 0300701, credit of $2.45. DPO 09002-01, $22,282.55 credit. DPO 090-08, $6,094.07 on the Bath County High School HVAC renovation BG 22-376.
I'll make the motion to approve the change orders for unspent funds associated with the DPOs totaling $16,433.91, the credit of the DPO 0300201 of $77. DPO 0300601 of $165.98. DPO 0300701 of $2.45. DPO of 0900201, $22,282.55. And DPO 09008, $6,094.07 on the Bath County High School HVAC renovation BG number 22-376.
I'll second that motion. So have a motion by Carla, second by Barbara, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, discussion and possible action to approve the construction documents for the Bath County Middle School renovation BG 25-084.
I'll make that motion to approve the construction documents for the Bath County High School, I'm sorry, Bath County Middle School renovation BG number 25-084.
I'll second. Have a motion by Carla, second by Barbara, any discussion?
I have this question.
Okay.
A couple of questions on this one here. With approving it, can we go ahead and prove it to the super to...
I was gonna do that in other business, but we can, there has to be a separate motion from this, I think. For him to be able to approve it.
If upon the water test gets done by the city, we need to be able to speed this thing along and put stuff out to bid. So does it need to go in this motion, or does it need to go into other business along with the middle school, because it's all wrapped up in one?
Do a separate motion.
Okay.
Any other discussion? So all in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Other business? I would like to make a motion that we authorize Dr. Milton to approve the...
Construction documents?
The bid documents that we can go ahead and move forward as presented. Would that stick, would that be all right? After all the testing's done? Okay. So I have a motion by Barbara, second by Carla, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Opposed, motion carries. I also have a motion to approve the first reading on policy 08. Dot 13451, AP 21, Title I expenditures of funds. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn? Have a motion by Eric, second by Carla, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We stand adjourned.